Thank you for your attendance at our virtual town hall meeting and the kickoff of We Got You at the Beach. And this particular town hall will be talking about managing stress in uncertain times. So, a couple of things before we get started. Um, We Got You at the Beach is an initiative that has been launched through the College of Healthy Human Services in order to support the beach community during these times. Um, the goal is to help the college, the university, and the community stay connected, even while social distancing. So, we're thinking about colleges, departments, study groups, staffing units, student organizations. We want to make sure that in these times, and these are particularly trying times for all of us, that we make sure that we stay connected during these times. Um, we're going to have monthly town hall meetings for students, staff, and faculty as one of many ways that we can let you know that we got you at the beach and how we will promote campus connectivity. For our first town hall meeting, our panel of health, wellness, and safety experts are here to answer your questions and address your concerns during this stressful and uncertain time. Um, so, one thing that I would like to particularly let you know that this is not like your ordinary Zoom call that you may have with your classes or in the community. Because of the large number of people that are attending here at this moment, you will only be able to see the attendees. Um, there is however, a wonderful Q and A feature that you will see at the bottom of your Zoom. When you look at the bottom, you should see Q and A. Make sure that you type your questions and I, as your moderator, will make sure that we address your questions as soon as possible. Um, also today, we're going to talk about stress management. If you know, being under stay-at-home orders can be particularly stressful. Um, we have a wonderful team of panelists that will be available to address your concerns. And for other counseling and other services, we will provide you with a list of resources at the time at the town hall meeting. And additionally, we direct you to other wonderful resources that we have for you here within our college and in the university as well. Um, I do, I must reprimand if I don't even introduce myself. I am Dr. Amber Johnson. I am going to be your moderator for this evening. Um, I am an assistant professor in the Department of Health Science. Um, and I will be the one looking forward to your questions and as I will begin introducing our esteemed panelists. Um, first, we have Dr. Gottwyn Orkay. Um, he is a physician and experienced healthcare administrator. So, he's had lots of experiences within the Department of Healthcare and Healthcare Administration and the Department of Health Science as an adjunct faculty. He's also worked at the health organizations. He's worked extensively with disaster relief programs and humanitarian assistance within the Middle East and North African regions. Um, and he is considered very experienced in the field of health policy, disaster relief, and humanitarian assistance. Um, I'm going to allow him just to say a few words before I introduce the rest of the panelists. Uh, Dr. Orkay, you have the floor. Um, you're muted, Dr. Orkay.
Unmuted, okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Amber Johnson. And it's a great pleasure to be here today. And um, as I will speak further down with my presentation, this is deja vu that I did not expect to meet me at home. This situation is what I would expect when I'm running around the world somewhere in Syria, in Yemen, but now it has really come home to roost. So, I'm happy that we could share this moment of interaction with one another. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Orkay, for that. Um, the next person we'll have speak to us today is Ms. Tony Espinoza Farrell. She is a lecturer in the Gadget Program directed for the Department of Health Science. And she has over thirty years of experience evaluating community-based public health projects involving youth, sexual health, and alcohol, tobacco use, and other drug use. Ms. Espinoza Farrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. So, hi, everyone. Thank you for attending our first CHHS Town Hall Meeting. As Dr. Johnson said, I'm Tony Espinoza Farrell, and I'm an alumni of Cal State Long Beach. I've been a lecturer in the Health Science Department since nineteen ninety-seven and served as a graduate program coordinator and then director for the past twenty years. As Dr. Johnson mentioned, I have been have over thirty years of experience evaluating community-based public health projects involving alcohol, tobacco, and other drug issues, otherwise known as ATOD. During times of stress, individuals will sometimes turn to ATOD as a way to cope with their stress. I feel it's important to consider alternatives to using ATOD, like taking an online fitness class or participating in mindful meditation. YouTube has many free resources for both of those. Sometimes when I'm feeling overwhelmed with work or a current safer-at-home order, I'll take a long walk in my neighborhood. This really helps to clear my head and get some much-needed exercise. I also think it's important for you to keep up your social life while you're staying safe and practicing social distancing. My family and I have a standing date at seven o'clock on Friday nights. There are about twenty of us that get together virtually. And we've played trivia games, we've played bingo, and just kind of hung out and chatted for a while. This Friday, we're going to try to play Name That Tune. We'll see how that goes. It's really about trying to stay creative and making sure that you're being mindful of your self-care in the process. Again, welcome to our town hall meeting, and I want you to know, we are all here for you.
Thank you so much for your introduction and your tips about managing stress during this time. Um, next, we'll have Dr. Shirley Feldman Jensen. She is a global thinker and leader within policy expertise. She has a doctorate degree in Policy Planning and Development from USC, including certificates in health emergencies and large populations from Johns Hopkins. Dr. Feldman Jensen, you have the floor.
Thank you, and welcome, everybody. I'm so happy to have so many people joining us and thinking about ways that we can positively come together in these times where we have to stay apart physically. As Amber said, I'm Dr. Shirley Feldman Jensen. I'm with the School of Criminology, Criminal Justice, and Emergency Management. And I have brought years of public health experience. Now, too, I'm an alumni of Cal State Long Beach. One of the things I'd really like to focus on today is living with uncertainty. Because this virus is so new, and we don't understand its patterns and how it's going to really move through our populations, we have history that we can draw on and how other viruses have worked, but we're not entirely sure what is going to happen. And so, to learn as young scholars, to draw upon what you've already learned, that we can understand what a scientific degree of uncertainty is and where our knowledge is certain, and really draw our strength from that. And just embrace our time together as a way of dealing with that uncertainty.
Thank you, Dr. Shirley Feldman Jensen, for your introduction. Next, we'll have Dr. Joanne Toretini Luna. Um, she's a professor in the Advanced Studies in Education and Counseling Department. Um, she is known nationally and internationally for her clinical community work with individuals, families, and communities in situations of armed conflict and disasters. Uh, Dr. Toretini, Luna, you have the floor. Uh, Dr. Luna, you are muted.
Can you hear me now?
I can, thank you.
Um, I was just saying, I'm glad Zoom finally let me in door. It was a struggle. But, uh, welcome to everybody. I'm so glad that you're taking the opportunity to come together virtually with our university community and others who are joining us as well. Um, I'm a licensed psychologist as well as a professor here at the university. And I feel kind of, it sounds weird to say, but I feel sort of comfortable in the middle of disasters because I've worked for many years in war situations and disaster situations, especially in Central America and to some extent in South Africa. Uh, when I began working in Nicaragua, I realized that it wasn't adequate to think of the situation and the people's needs just in terms of an individual psychotherapeutic approach, because the problems were so widespread. Uh, people were so impacted that it became really necessary to change my way of thinking about things. And that has also been a big change, not only for my work, but also for my worldview. So, I began to understand that in situations like that, if we just think in terms of pathology, we're just going to think everybody is, you know, has a pathology in mental health. But what I came to believe and really see on the ground is that situations like that and the situation that we're living in today here is many of us experience a normal reaction of normal people to an abnormal situation. So, the goal is not to try and figure out, you know, what mental health problems people have so we can, you know, shrink them and get them, everybody through a course of psychotherapy. But how can we help to stabilize ourselves, first of all, even a practitioner, to stabilize ourselves and help to stabilize our families and our loved ones and stabilize our communities? Um, and that's kind of the starting point that I use. What are the actions that we can use to help us get back on even keel, even though we're still experiencing the pandemic, we're still in the disaster? I became very convinced over the years in working as not only a psychologist, but a coordinator of mental health services for a very large region of Nicaragua, and then later as a consultant and worker for humanitarian organizations, United Nations organizations. I really began to help people to think about ways that they could go about stabilizing themselves. And so, even though we can't physically meet together, we have the benefit of being able to do a lot virtually. And this is one of the things I think should be the beginning of a conversation, not the end of a conversation. And we'll need to think about ways that we can support our communities and help to overcome and move through with strength and resilience. Very distressing situations. I'm from New York originally, and I have loved ones that are impacted by this pandemic. And it's very difficult for me, but I'm not alone. And it helps a little bit to know that others are experiencing similar things and that together we'll find ways to help ourselves stabilize and then heal. We'll need to find ways to pay tribute and honor to those of us, our family members and loved ones that we have lost, to those people that still need assistance, to people in our communities that still need assistance, and those of us that are the walking well. Uh, there's a lot that we could do by telephone, video conference, and so on, to help our families and our communities move through this. So, that's my way of thinking about this, and I'm very happy to be part of this great team of thinkers and you all who are part also of this conversation, to think this out together so that we can move through it successfully and help others as well as ourselves. That's it for now.
Thank you for those words of encouragement, particularly, we really need them at this time. Um, and we also have Natalie Whitehouse Capuano, who's a part-time faculty member in the Health Science Department. And she also serves as the coordinator of the M H, I mean, the Masters of Healthcare Administration. Excuse me, I'm, as you may know, whenever you're in positions where you're talking to so many people about a wonderful, not necessarily wonderful topic, but you get a little nervous. And so, I hope that you bear with me as I go through this, and I'm just really excited to be able to share this information with you all. Um, so, I'm going to start that again, because I don't want to mess up Ms. Natalie Whitehouse Capuano's introduction. But she is the coordinator of the Masters of Healthcare Administration Accelerated Program. Um, she also has a Bachelor's in Science in Dietetics, Food Administration, and an MPH degree from CSULB, and she has over twenty years of experience in tobacco prevention. So, Natalie, you have the floor.
Hello. How is everybody this evening? I hope you're all doing well. Again, I am an alum from Cal State Long Beach, and I know that stress in situations like this can be very overwhelming. And as a person with a degree in dietetics and food administration, one of the things that I want to remind you is to take care of your body. So, make sure that you eat well, you exercise, and then you get plenty of sleep. And don't forget about your relationships with individuals. So, keep in contact with your friends and loved ones, call them on the telephone, email them, do Zoom conferencing with them. It is really fun to get your grandparents and your older relatives on Zoom to see them struggle. It's fun. Do video chats with them. And then the other thing that I want to remind you is take breaks from watching the news. It can be overwhelming when you find out all the horrible things that are happening throughout the world. So, take breaks from that. The other thing, what I like to do when I'm stressed out is I like to listen to music. There are certain songs I like to put on and just scream and yell and sing at the top of my lungs. I do not have a good voice, but it makes me feel good. Again, thank you for attending our first town hall meeting. I look forward to your comments and go beach.
So, thank you so much for that. Let's see here. So, I want to take the time to introduce Dr. Gottwyn Orkay again. He is going to talk to us a little bit about strategies to mitigate stress during this time of the coronavirus, COVID-19, and ways that we can manage stress during this time. So, Dr. Orkay, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson. Uh, while thinking and pondering on this particular concept right now, COVID-19 and all the issues and problems we face, and the question now is managing stress in uncertain times, which is a general theme, but this is actually just a sub theme of We Got You at the Beach. So, I will start with a quote from our dean. I spoke with her also a few minutes ago before we started. She told me, she reminded me, we all have a huge role to play in alleviating some of the burden that the students and also faculty are facing right now. Everything has changed as we know it. So, in discussing stress management, I will leave my distinguished panelists to deal with that. I got the easier job actually to introduce We Got You at the Beach. What do we mean? We want to talk about the need for resilience. We want to talk about innovation. Everything has changed. I'm looking at the list of participants right now. Already, we have about one hundred and twenty-eight participants. It means we're already fulfilling one part of our goal, remaining relevant. And how do we not channel all of this into a strategic approach? And that singular commitment to a common purpose. And lastly, this is a collective and individual responsibility. So, we are talking about faculty, we're talking about staff, and also talking about students. And at the end of this webinar, I'm just going to speak for about six minutes more. At the end of this webinar, if the only thing you take out of it is We Got You at the Beach, even during these uncertain times, then this, our wonderful committee, will have achieved our purpose, which means we will have introduced you to the resources that are available, will have let you understand that we are all in this together and for the long haul, not part-time. And lastly, that the university administration, the faculty, and staff, we all really do care. As my colleagues have already mentioned, in a webinar talking about stress, usually we chat participants to do things like promote self-care, encourage everybody to rest, take a break, eat well, tune out the news channels, because the news is driving me crazy. We also will tell you, exercise, meditate, yoga, pray, and an endless list of what is now the obvious, which we all know my reduced stress. And as I said, I will leave that to the panelists. My own is simple, because my own personal expectation is very, very simple. Why can't we just keep it real? And by that, I mean, I am stressed. You are stressed. But we still need to be kind to ourselves and to everybody around us, because we believe that even this shall pass. So, at the beach, we want to maintain connectivity. Let's stay connected. We have all the tools, we have all the means. Let's promote engagement, faculty, students, staff, because this is a parallel universe we're living. It's an alternate reality right now. So, as we engage others, we also want to be relevant across the board and under that umbrella. Remember what I said at the beginning? We got you at the beach. We've got your back. All you need to do is ask. All you need to do is speak out. And that is not weakness, that is actually strength. My distinguished panelists will explain that further down. So, let's keep it real. Let me tell you what happened to me last week. I sprang my first boom, zoom, boom, boom, when my younger daughter walked into a session to tell me she was ready for her dinner. And I was trying to show by way, and she came to the camera and waved and said, oh, she wanted something specifically that only daddy could make. And I told her, okay, darling, just give me a moment, I'm still at work. And she told me, is that work? I said, yes, it is work. She said, oh, sorry, but she still made sure she came into the view, waved, then left. She's seven years old. But after that, one of my students wrote me, and she told me the incident made her day, that that was the only thing she saw in my lecture. And she said, she saw the ordinariness of a new reality. And personally, that unleashed a cascade of thoughts in my head from what appears to be a lifetime ago, when I was serving and leading programs in different global hotspots. I cannot say bad words now, so I can only say, draw a list, S-H-I-T list, and those are the only places I have served. Think of Darfur, South Sudan, all around Central America, Pakistan, my deployment in Afghanistan, and all of our subs around Africa in rapid succession. I've been robbed, I've been in hostage situation, have been arrested way too many times that I care to talk about, and obviously, because I'm in front of you now, survived plane and helicopter accidents. And my stressed-out poor mother has not stopped praying that I get a real job. How have I coped? What helped me? So, this is just, in the next three more minutes, a summary of some of my personal journey. This period of the COVID-19 and the coronavirus pandemic is deja vu. This is home for me. I go out to work and I come home to rest. So, it feels surreal that what I go out to do has come home to meet me. And I also feel very sad how ill-prepared we are for this. At the beginning of every semester, I usually ask my students if they have a therapist. And no one wants to admit that they're going through stuff. This is culture, and many of us will suffer in silence. When I ask them, do you have a therapist? I never get a yes, I never get a no. And I always tell them, I've got one. I'm crazy. And that usually will be the icebreaker. Then we start our conversation. Let us just keep it real. We said, we got you at the beach. Let's look at numbers right now. The restriction in place around the world, not just in our community right now, but everywhere, I expected to take a toll on our mental health. And according to a recent published paper, it suggests that already more than two hundred and sixty million people suffering from anxiety worldwide and over three hundred million experiencing depression. All my CSULB students are definitely included in these grim statistics, based on the emails, text messages, phone calls that I receive around the clock. I've even had a student write me to say, she read the instructions on one of my assignments, and she developed skin rashes, horticaria, and a stiff neck. And she wrote me at 2:00 a.m., and I just happened to still be working when she wrote me that. And luckily, I already add this phrase. So, I wrote her back and I told her, we got you at the beach. Now, let us go through those steps, and you tell me what the issue is. So, during the times of emergency, it is normal for people to experience higher levels of stress and distress. These are not mental health issues per se. And as the panelists will explain to you, chronic stress and anxiety can cause an increase in mental health conditions during and particularly after emergencies. So, we got you at the beach. We want to be the midwife. We want to stay you through this initial phase, then through We want to stay you through this initial phase, then through the early recovery, which is the next phase we will go into, then to full recovery. We want everyone to be with us. And this webinar is just to tell you, we are there for you, and there are requirements, and we have to accommodate everyone. We have to be kind. The remote working and learning are the biggest shifts for many people right now. And this may create additional stresses for some. It just means isolation. For others, it means juggling the demands of home life in addition to work. So I don't think it's now be, it's going to be ordinary now for me to be fixing dinner and be teaching. This was impossible before. I remember I would tell my students, don't bring your phone to class. But now, the class is on the phone. So what do I tell them to do next? Then, we're all in school, all beautifully dressed, or less so, and doing our stuff. But now we are all at home. Guess what? Some of my students, their parents operate taco trucks. They are first generation. And this has exposed even the inequality, because in the hostel, in the dormitory, we are all equal. A student wrote me and said, please, professor, I cannot fulfill the assignments right now, because I don't have internet connection. I will need to travel to my auntie's place and live with her for the remainder of the semester. And I was shocked. I, it's never crossed my mind that that was possible. So this inequality also factors in. The kind of form a person has, the resources they have access to, will impact the experience of remote working and learning, and how we are able to cope with the restrictions. So in the webinar today, we are not talking to only the students, or about the students, but also to the faculty. Today, well, you're all looking at me in my home. And I can show it proudly. But we know this is not a universal contest. So this is not business as usual. And we also appreciate that everybody has a different context. This is what we mean by, we got you at the beach. And what we said throughout this webinar. Let me tell you what I've learned during this shutdown. I have learnt the names of countless Disney princesses. And I also have learnt, at least with all the lyrics, Ariana Grande's songs. You know why? I have to homeschool my daughter, which means it's tit for tat. If she agrees for an assignment, then I'll watch a movie with her. And when I watch those movie, I just cannot help but ask her, who is that, that mermaid? Oh, Golden Beauty, oh, this. So now I have a list that contains the Disney princesses, so I can let her know I actually know them. And this is completely different. And when I find myself dancing and twerking with her, oops, I wasn't supposed to say that. That's also to Ariana Grande. So everything has changed. But what is key, I will wrap up now, in the stress management and adapting to this reality, before the distinguished panelists will take over. What is key? Top on the list is communication. Good communication is critical in containing what we all know is an uncontained situation. We care about our staff, we care about the faculty, and we care about the students, and this remains our priority. Yes, we said tune out the news, but we still need to have regular updates on what is going on. We have to be aware of resources. And we have to, very importantly, ensure that messages around welfare, our wellbeing, are shared and visible to all. So I will stop here so that I don't consume all the time. I will move to the Q and A session subsequently, and the panelists will take over from there, and I will be glad to answer questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Okay. That is, there was some very helpful advice, and we really appreciate you really keeping it real, because I think we're all stressed, regardless of social economic status, regardless of whether we're faculty, staff, lecturer, administration, we are all stressed. And it's very important that we acknowledge that, because we can't really deal with that stress if we don't first acknowledge that we are having our own challenges. With that being said, I do have a question that I want to pose to the panelists from an attendee. It reads, "It's easy to have a list of things to do as listed by Dr. Orque to relieve stress. However, it is more, more difficult to carry out those things. I don't know which is my bigger challenge, the stress of all that is going on, or the loss of drive I feel to face each new day." Can we have a panelist or panelists respond to that? I'm Joane, go ahead.
I can say a few words, I'm sure other people have thoughts on this. I think of, I think of this question in a few dif- at a few different levels. One thing to keep in mind is if you go on airplane flight, when they give you the instructions in the beginning, they say if there is an emergency and the mat, the oxygen mask dropped down, and you're with a small child, put your mask on first before you try to help somebody else. Well, why is that? It's because if you're unconscious, you can't help anybody. So I like to think of self-care in that way, that there are some simple things that we may be able to do to stabilize ourselves, to get ourselves on an even keel before we try to reach out to help other people. I know for me, when I wake up in the morning, the first thing I do is I look at my phone just to see how bad it is. I look at New York, and then I look at California, and that's kind of the way I start my day. But I have to force myself to reboot and to calm my nervous system down, get my nervous system in a, a kind of a place where I can function and do my work and help my family. And so I have just a couple of little things that I do as a routine in the, in the morning, and I try to do them actually before I look at my phone if I can. There are some, and I use this in my psychotherapy practice as well, there are some energy meridian points or acupuncture, acupressure points in the body that we can just tap on, and that can help us to calm our nervous system down. So if you want to, people that are watching this, if you'd like to do it with me, I just start with, you know, what's called the third eye or the middle of the forehead. Just tap maybe ten times, and then tap right where your eyebrows begin, seven, ten times, and then on the side of the eyes, under the eyes, upper lip, under the lip, and then right here on the chest. And sometimes we can even teach children how to do what's called a butterfly hug, just kind of hook our thumbs together, put our hands on our chest, and do some alternating stimulation of those points, or you could do it like this as well. So you can, we can also do some self-talk. We can tell ourselves that this situation will not go on forever, everything does change. There are some promising, there's some promising information about possible treatments that are being studied now, and even though it seems like there's no way out, there will be a way out. Things will change at some point. And then the other part of the way I like to think about this is to look for connection, whenever possible, to look for connection virtually in a safe way with our communities. So for people that are able to, they can hook up with their fire departments, with their community emergency response teams, with other community, you know, their civic organizations, to call people that may be living alone, maybe isolated, to, if it's safe to do it, to do grocery drop-offs, if people are not able to, you know, hire somebody to drop off their, their groceries, and things like that. So, and then just getting on things like this, I think, can help us feel less alone and more empowered. And then as the situation is very fluid and continues to move, there will probably be more things that we can be involved in. So looking ahead to the future can also help. And then if there are things that are just very difficult to navigate, I know some students don't have a regular home to live in, may not have enough food to eat. Those are things that we have resources for at the university. And I know that there will be links posted, if they're not already visible. They will be available there for students to get some social services and that sort of help as well. So to the extent that we can, let's help each other and help others. And also, don't be afraid, we shouldn't be afraid to ask for assistance when we need it. We are all needing something right now, whether it's just a virtual shoulder or an arm around our, our shoulders or actual physical help. So it goes both ways, and we need to take care of ourselves and, and also look for ways to compassionately help others in our communities.
We had a suggestion. Headspace is a great app for managing stress as well, and it's free for the entire year. So you may want, if you're listening to this town hall at this time, you may want to consider Headspace as a resource for you to help manage your stress. Okay? Did anybody else want to talk about motivation in this time? How to maintain motivation in the event that we do lose motivation when we are social distancing and not being able to be around our loved ones, our friends, and so forth?
I'll say something. One of the things that I do to motivate myself, because it can be difficult to stay motivated, is I make sure I get up and shower and get dressed every morning. And if I have a lot of different tasks to do, I break them down into smaller tasks so that they don't seem so overwhelming. And that might be helpful is to, everything that you need to do, make smaller little tasks to do. And then when you finish each task, reward yourself. So give yourself a reward for completing some of the tasks that you had, had to do.
Thank you, thank you. Another question, thank you for unmuting me. What are warning signs of neck, a warning signs of neck, shoulders, aching body indicating, do you think that's a sign that an individual is under too much stress? Go ahead, Dr. Orque.
Yes. The, the signs of stress are ubiquitous. It could come in any guise. You can eat too much, and you can stop eating. You could have pain in all parts of the body that you don't even know the names, that those parts even exist. And you could also feel hedonistic. You have that feeling of hopelessness, worthlessness, senselessness, plus the mood swing. You could just see that who, you could fly off the handle, just at a moment's provocation. So it's a spectrum. And the same spectrum in the clinical setting could mask all that things. So it's not enough to just say, I'm stressed, that is why I'm acting out. But the question would be, how do you cope with it? And what do you attribute to stress? I'll give an example. You all know the story of the dog ate my homework. Yes, I actually got one from my students, and he said, the dog ate the screen of the computer. That is why it couldn't do his homework. And I said, okay, did you try to go to the library? No, did you try to do this? No. And I said, you always leave my class at a particular hour. Why? He said, because I come to school early, and that is the time I just need to use the bathroom, and just happens to be during your class. And I said, why do you come to school early? Then he explained the personal context to me. He was stressed out until the dog ate his computer, and he had to go to use the bathroom just midway in my class, and I noticed him. But after we resolved that, he started needing to use the bathroom at that time. So it's just, it's a spectrum. And there's no single bullet you can use. But one thing to say is that your personality definitely will change. You just don't feel like waking up, which is one extreme part. On that part, you just can't sleep. Amber.
Thank you, thank you. I do want to read a couple of additional comments, and we have an additional question. Well, we know Dr. Freshman, thank you for your resource. She wrote, another resource is UCLA's Mindfulness Awareness Research Center. It's more academic and less commercial than Headspace, but it is also free for download. It has free guided meditations as well as studies. It's not, not necessarily to compete with Headspace, it's just different. So that's another additional resource that we could think about when we're dealing with stress. Another comment was, I have reached out to the school about housing problems, and the school has gone above and beyond for me in ways I've never expected. I love the beach, and if you're reading this and need help, please reach out to the beach. This is an awesome university. Thank you so much, and this is a prime example of we got you at the beach, okay? We have a question. Any advice on how we can balance moving along with our lives? For example, moving, relationship changes, job changes, trying to have a kid, with the instinct to figuratively shelter in place and delay any kind of stressful change? Would anybody like to speak to that? Maybe Dr. Phil and Jensen, do you have any comments on that? You're muted.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes, so any advice on how? So basically, this person is asking, how do you balance the desire to move along with your life when having to shelter in place? I'm figuring that this question is stemming from the fact that, yeah, we may shelter in place, but do we have to shelter with moving on with the rest of our lives and not moving forward?
No, and there's a lot of creative ways to start moving your life forward. And as we are discovering, we are having this town hall meeting online, and there is many other venues to pursue more creatively, just advancing our lives. Depends on, I saw the note that somebody was thinking about maybe having a family, and then there's the professional advancement and the advancing themselves in their school. Some of our group activities are diminished at this point, but there are creative ways, but the scholarly groups are still getting together if you're involved in a university group. Those are just a handful of ways, but just.
Those are just a handful of ways, but just reach out and continue networking because there and you can take time to build those networks as you're advancing. I'm not sure that that got to the question.
Yeah, any, any other, any other comments on that question? Okay, and again, I would like to add that planning, planning for the future should never stop, regardless of whether you are sheltering in place or all of the shelter in place guidelines have been, have been uplifted or lifted. Make sure that you are thinking about having a 10-year plan, five-year plan and know that past pandemics have happened before. We have moved on, we survived them and advanced in certain, certain ways. So make sure that, you know, your, your planning and thinking about what's happening ahead doesn't stop because we are, we are under shelter in place orders. We, you know, we will make it through this. It is a very difficult time and sometimes it's very difficult to see what happens one or two years from now, giving everything that we have to adjust to now. But we will and things will move forward. And if you have a plan in place, you can be doing great things now. They help bring that plan into fruition. Okay? I have another question. I'm currently living with a large family and I often find myself having no alone time due to a lack of space. Any recommendation as to how I can give myself a long time without actually being alone?
Okay, hi. So what I do, I live with my two sons that are home from college and we're all, you know, fighting for quiet space in terms of, you know, me teaching them, having their online classes. And sometimes when I'm feeling that feeling of like, oh, I need to get away from everyone, I'll go for a walk or even just sitting outside, even though I'm really not away from everyone, it's really helpful to sit in the sun. I just take a chair, sit out there for a little bit, get some vitamin D. I'll take a book, I'll read, but that really helps me to kind of feel like I have some me alone time. And so that's one thing that works for me.
Yes, go ahead.
So I've lived in a house of 20, 10 to 20 people over the last 20 years. And this is, and I'm an introvert, so alone time is always a very prized thing. And when you have a house full of extended family, it is difficult to find a space. So it's helpful to be authentic and real. I had the advantage of a larger house so I could go to my own room or go outside as Ms. Espinoza Farrell indicated. But some people have a lot of family in a very small apartment environment. So if that's your situation, my son has come up with a creative idea of just announcing in his tight living places that he needs introvert time and he will create a virtual or an imaginary introvert space and everybody around him knows it. And then he can just be in that spot that is comfortable for him and everybody respects that space and he can have some alone time. So there are ways, depending on the people you live with, of creating those spaces.
Thank you so much. So I would like to say that it is 6:55. We did schedule this town hall from 6:00 to 7:00, but we, we're not rushing you. So if you have more questions, please make sure to ask them. But if you had to have to go, there is one thing that I want to share with you before we continue with the question and answer period. Let's see, I'm gonna pull up a screen for you. So again, the, the major theme of this town hall and subsequent town hall meetings and creating spaces where we can stay connected is we got you at the beach. So we wanted to share some important resources for you. There's a basic needs fund that you can access. It connects students with food, housing and financial resources and services. We have chats for, so just because we are not on campus doesn't mean that chat is not still open. So if you need, if you feel like you need a counselor or psychological services, you can speak to a counselor at 562-985-4001. So make sure to know that that resource is still available to you. And then lastly, we have the faculty and staff assistance program. And it's a free resource to help faculty and staff resolve personal, family and work-related problems. You can make an appointment at 562-985-7435. And of course, there are more resources for you at the bottom of you can visit Bentley backslash beach community. So and on another note, before anyone has to go, don't forget, we're still going to be asking questions in a minute. But I also want to thank Dean Lounsbury for her. For those of you who don't know, we were trying to think about what really captures, what we really want to convey. And we were meeting and she said, you know what? We got you at the beach. So I did want to say thank you, Dean Lounsbury, for your leadership in creating spaces where we can stay connected here. So with that being said, we're going to open up the floor again for more questions. And if you need to leave at this time, you're free to do so. But if you have a question, we encourage you to stay around. Okay? So the next question is, can any of you comment on the role of prayer in dealing with stress? Anybody want to take a stab at that?
I can say a couple of things about that. Okay. I think that when people have spiritual practices, whether it's prayer, meditation or getting together with other people who have similar beliefs and views, that that can be very calming, it can be, it can bring a lot of comfort to people. So to the extent that people can do that in a safe way, virtually, or even just by themselves, I think that that can be very useful. Now, sometimes what happens during big calamities like this is that our belief systems can be very challenged. So the idea that, you know, there's a God that's in charge can bring up all kinds of questions like, why would a God that's good let things like this happen? And it can bring up very existential questions that can be difficult to deal with. So I just want to encourage people not to struggle alone with some of these questions because these questions have come up over the ages with, you know, people and tribes and groups that have survived terrible, terrible calamities. And many people have found a way to maintain strength and a sense that there is a goodness in the universe and in the world. So I encourage people to draw on those traditions. There are many institutions that are faith-based, religiously oriented groups that have webinars and podcasts and things like that that can be accessed and they can be very comforting. So I say, you know, my advice is to find whatever feels right at this moment and connect with people that you find are a source of comfort in these times. And there may be some things that we just want to put on the back burner for now. It's like, okay, this is challenging a belief that I have had all my life, so maybe I can't figure it out right now. But are there aspects of a tradition that I'm part of that can bring me comfort? And, you know, I would really go with those things. And then put some of the other questions for now on the back burner because they are existential questions, many of them, and, and difficult to sort out at this time. So go with brings comfort and sustenance spiritually at this time, if we have those tools.
Thank you, thank you. We have another question. This is a question about homeschooling. And Dr. Orque, you talked about that. I'm currently having to deal with that with my high school freshman. So the question is, I'm homeschooling my son and before, when he was in school, I would do my schoolwork. Now I'm homeschooling during that time and I'm having a hard time setting time for my own studies. Do you have recommendations on how to balance this? So any comments on that? I know I have stories, but Dr. Orque, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, it, it is really tricky because if we want to stick to the theme, keeping it real, we'll know that it's a delicate balance and we have the competing priorities. No, none of us begging for this when we said, Happy New Year, Happy 2020. I can't wait for 2020 to be over. At home, right now, I have a sophomore who thought she had already escaped from me, but she's back home. Then I have an elementary school student also. But it's really still very difficult. But then I've seen other questions coming up that I would tie together. The trick or what I'm struggling and trying to do is to maintain a routine and a schedule. Because I'm a healthcare worker, I still go out almost every day. Practically every day I do go out and I go out for long hours. But notwithstanding, we maintain a routine. We know the bedtime, you know, when we wake up and we know even the meal times. And that will sort of help, then also keep the young one engaged. For example, we have the zero time, we have the time you should not be touching your devices, TV, computers, laptop, whatever, handheld or whatever you have. And that has sort of helped us for the minor, but the older one where she takes care of her own things. So it's just a delicate balance. But another thing in maintaining routine is that I'm engaged with the teachers because they are monitoring the progress in their own platform. She attends a private school. And that platform, they tell us what she's doing and what she's not doing. So that kind of keeps me on my, on my toes. It's not just arbitrarily learning, but I'm sure many of you also have your own different and unique experiences on that. But keeping the routine, keeping a schedule has been the only thing keeping me from drowning.
I would have to definitely add to that. Homeschooling, I don't want to make it glitz and glamour because it's difficult, very, very difficult. And it's very easy to put your needs aside because you have to make sure that your, your children are doing well and keeping up with their studies. But again, like Dr. Orque was saying, that it's very important to have a schedule, a schedule that, you know, your child cannot sleep in. They have to get up and maintain that routine. You have to have a set up, a set time that they wake up. If you do work at your kitchen table, bring your child to your kitchen table. If your child takes a nap, make sure that you try to structure those naps at a time that where you can do your work as well. I had, I went through undergrad, masters, PhD, and now in this situation, having to take care of a child. And if you know me, if you see me around on campus, feel free to send me an email. I can give you all types of tips and trips, of tips and tricks to being a college student, a mom or a father. But it is an adjustment and know that it's okay to just be enough. It is okay to just be enough. And so you don't have to be exceedingly above all of everything that you can ask for, but it's okay to just be enough at this time. And know that everyone is in it with you. We're, as faculty members, we're in it with you. We know your pain and we know your struggle. So again, this is not going to last always. But if I had any advice on that, make sure that you have structure. Make sure that you capitalize on any time that you're, depending on how old your child is, if there's, if there's sleep time, nap time, making sure that you're taking time to work together. If, if possible, because we know how elementary school students are. They, they like to do their own thing, but you know, this is an opportunity to make learning fun. And again, that all depends on the age of the child. So make sure that it's structured, make sure that you're not too hard on yourself as a parent and know that in three weeks, the semester will be over, you know? So it's not gonna, if I can't say anything else today, that this is not going to last always. And if you look, if you need any other advice on trying to be a student and a parent, I'm, I'm here for you. So yeah, so we have, on that, we have a, let's see, we have another question. And so we have any advice for, or recommendations for students who are also currently working on the front line? This is an excellent question. Any advice for students that are working on the front line? And I think Dr. Jensen wants to take that.
Okay, so I coordinate the emergency services administration program and all my students are on frontline. And it doesn't matter if it was a pandemic now, they're in fire season or we're always, there's always something going. And it's treating, as Dr. Orque said, to be kind to each other, be gentle with each other, understand that we're all in an extra situation. It's, it's very, it has unique challenges as we've just all been discussing in everybody's individual lives. And so we need to give each other extra grace. If you're on the front lines and you're having extra hours and you can't get your classwork done, be in communication with your professor. Let them know what's going on and ask for those extensions. The university has been really gracious this semester because of the unique situation. So there are a number of tools that the professor has at their disposal to help with the timeframes and there are extra provisions for an incomplete. If that become, becomes necessary, there's provisions for credit or no credit options even. So your grade point average won't get penalized. But above all, be in conversation with your professor and work out a plan depending on the demands of your frontline position.
Any other thoughts on students on the first line, on the front lines?
Yes, yes. May I?
Yes, of course.
I think also that part of connecting during this period and especially for people who are on the front lines and very vulnerable and in, many of them are in danger without enough personal protective equipment and so on, that we also find ways to express solidarity with each other. And for some people, this actually means walking out of the job temporarily. And I think that we need to support workers that are doing that and not do things like cross picket lines virtually. I know that tomorrow, many of the Amazon workers and the Whole Foods workers are going out on strike for the day. And even though this may impact people that need those supplies and so on, they also need, the workers need to stay alive. And uh, you know, billion-dollar companies should certainly be able to provide them with protective equipment. So when there are things like this, actions that go beyond just expressing solidarity verbally, we can help support people, healthcare workers and grocery workers and other people that are on the front lines with what we do, how we how we conduct our lives. Certainly, they're not gonna go out on a three-month-long strike, but if they walk out for half a day or part of a day, a whole day, if we're in a position to support that and those demands that they have that are life-preserving for them, that is also something that we could do.
Thank you. Um, I have two questions that sort of stem along um stem among uh along the lines of you know, challenges that they're facing with instructors in their transition, not being able, you know, there's a longer list of time for things to be graded. There is um that transition and having, you know, instructors really, you know, struggle. And then they have to um, you know, really adjust, and that can be stressful. And then another question is along those same lines that talks about, you know, the stress of having to postpone graduation and um and suffer GPA-wise. So basically, what I'm sensing is both of these questions are really getting at the heart of, you know, the adjustment. One thing I want to say is that as in as a assistant professor, that I I want students to realize and understand that um we are people too, right? We are, we are homeschooling, we are adjusting. We are taking care of our um family members and loved ones that um may be sick or may be at risk. But we ha- we are doing the best that we can to adjust the way that you are. Are we perfect? Absolutely not. Is this the first time anyone or college or university have had to deal with this in this century? Absolutely. So that doesn't take away from the stress of, you know, not maybe getting your your grades in quickly or um having to postpone graduation. But I I do want to, you know, be honest with you that it, you know, it it's a struggle. You know, it's a struggle, and we're doing the best that we can to try to accommodate students, including things like uh credit versus no credit, being very flexible in how we um we grade things, being very flexible in how we um engage with students and making sure that you have the resources available. So we know that these changes can be very detrimental. It's uh, I participate in commencement every year, and I was extremely disappointed that I would have to wait into the fall to co- to congratulate many of the students who I know have worked so hard. But I do want to encourage you um to, you know, think about the different resources that are available available to you, thinking about the credit, no credit option that are available to you if you worry about uh GPA. But I do want to open this up to the panelists. There will be maybe some some, because of the stress of everything that's going on, there may be a decline on motivation to work and a decline in um, I guess, work productivity and maybe a reduced grade. Do you have any recommendations or advice to deal with the stress and how to um continue to maintain their GPA or things like that? Go ahead, Dr. Loun, unmute unmute yourself.
I did, okay. Can you hear me? I find for myself that the day can just kind of turn into a big glob of uh inactivity or hyperactivity or what. I find that it's been helpful to parcel the day up, to tell myself that from a certain time to a certain time, I'm going to be on the computer, talking with students, grading papers and things like that. And then after another period of time, at a certain time, I'm going to go out for a run. And then in an at another hour, I'm gonna watch a little bit of TV, try and avoid most of the news programs and um not listen to the endless, you know, heightened horror um that is being put out there for people. But um, and also, I find that it's useful to intersperse activities, different kinds of activities, one after the other. So say, in the morning, first thing I do is I'll go and have a virtual Tai Chi class with my Tai Chi teacher. And then I know it's time for me to answer emails. And then after that, I will grade papers. And then after that, I'll do something else and then have a run in the evening. So having a little bit of a schedule, even if it's kind of informal, I find that's helpful for me, and others and students may find that it's helpful for them too. I am waking up later generally in the day, so um, and staying up later at night. And um, my son is uh in his twenties, and he could stay up all night and, you know, just be fine. So we have to kind of um regularize our times and how what the noise level is and things like that, and kind of um come to some agreement on that. But um, I do find that because I have an early morning, not real early, but you know, my first activity is a physical activity, Tai Chi, that that gets me out of bed. I'm not just in bed until noon every day or whatever. So having something like that scheduled, even if it's just to go out for a walk with a mask, can help us to get the day moving. And then I do find that scheduling in blocks of activities is is helpful as well.
Um, any words of encouragement for students that have to withdraw from classes or um may have suffered uh GPA-wise because of um because of they may not have access to the internet or to something to that degree? Any words of encouragement for those who had to withdraw?
I do. I think it's important not to be hard on yourself, because this is not anything that any of us have ever experienced before. I think that in the future, for example, if you're going to apply for graduate school, I think everyone is going to understand, you know, this semester, that um there may be things that we normally would not have experienced or seen. So I think it's just really important, as you know Amber had said earlier, to not be too hard on yourself. And this is just happening now. Eventually, we will get through this, and then you can just pick up and don't let it discourage you. You just really need to focus on getting through this time and making a plan for yourself and hit the ground running once we're back to normal. I also think it's important to communicate with your professors. And send emails and share how you're feeling. For example, for most of my classes, I don't accept late work. This is not normal. And so reach out to your professors and work out a plan so that you are able to complete the semester. You know, maybe you will have um a little bit of a different schedule than what was in the syllabus. But I'm sure if you reach out to your professors, they are willing to work with you. I know that some of the assignments that we had to come up with that are alternatives to what we normally do, we haven't tried them out yet. And so it may take longer to grade, or you're thinking about, how would I do this different? And so again, reach out to your professors and share how you are feeling. And I think that will go a long way with helping you to feel a little bit of relief and um eliminate some of that stress that you're able to share. And again, I'm sure they will work with you.
Um, I have one last question. This question says, I'd like to redirect uh the the negative energy of this pandemic with a joke or fond memory with friends and family. Is that something that can be suggested with stress management, with the stress management strategy of this task force? Any thoughts?
Yes, Amber, I can I can start. Uh, I I think uh we have to also consider the sensitivity and sensibility of different individuals. Because uh I know we're keeping it real, but COVID-19 is real. And I was listening to an NPR uh program as I was driving yesterday from downtown LA back home. And they were talking about um the different artists, the musicians releasing COVID-19 and coronavirus famed songs and people pledging. But then they also now described the different rap artists, and it was a call-in show. And I could just see the heated debates there, that can you really profit from this? Is this a joke or not? In a progress setting, perhaps, you can say, you know, that is one of the jokes I saw. A man just had a set of twins. And they said, oh, we know the names, it's going to be COVID and Corona. Okay, then we will laugh about that one. But some of those jokes should just be borderline. I know we're trying to relieve the stress, but we also have to think of the sensitivity and sensibility and uh choose how we go about it. We could also just deflect the negative energy by talking about something positive, but not talking about the pandemic itself in a jocular form. That is just how I feel.
Could I just, could I just chime in on that? I think that's a really good point. And a lot of times, people will say, well, humor helps, but there are different kinds of humor. So I like to go with the kind of humor that expresses solidarity, expresses the idea that we are all in this together, we'll get through this together, and to move away from the kind of humor, so-called humor, that puts people down, that makes fun of people, that, you know, taunts people who have gone through, uh, you know, bad experiences or loss. So I I think humor can help to relieve tension. It can also help to um make us stronger together and develop solidarity, or it could go the other way. So I always like to use as a guideline, if I'm about to say something funny or what I think is funny, is this going to help this person or these people? Or is it going to pull them further down? And I always try and go with what will help.
With that being the last question, I would definitely like to thank our esteemed panelists for joining us here tonight. Thank you all who attended. We will, this will, this has been recorded, and we will make sure that we send out this video along with um additional resources that can be available to you. So again, thank you for attending our first town hall. And remember, uh, we got you at the beach.
Go beach!
Go beach! Thank you!
Thank you, everybody.